Good afternoon, everybody, and can I welcome everyone to today's Cabinet Meeting of Suffolk County Council. This meeting is being webcast live and will be available to watch subsequently on the County Council's website. Members of the public and the press may also record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded, provided due courtesy and respect, but shown to others in attendance in line with the council's published guidance. Now, I just ask everyone, please, just to make sure their mobile phones are switched off or on silent, and also that the volumes are turned down on laptops and PCs as well, please. We're not expecting a fire drill. In the event of the alarm sounding, please leave the chamber by following the fire exit signs at the rear of the chamber. Fire evacuation instructions can also be found on page four of the agenda. Okay, so we'll move straight on to Agenda Item One, apologies for absence. Do we have any today, please?
We have no apologies for absence for today's Cabinet meeting.
Thank you. Cabinet members, declarations of interests and dispensations. Do any Cabinet members need to declare any interests? And if so, can you state it in relation to which item on the agenda? Any to declare? No? None received. Thank you. Next item is minutes of the previous meeting. These start on page five of our papers, and they run through to page 12. Is everyone happy that I sign those as a true reflection of the meeting? Is that agreed? Agreed. Thank you very much. I'll do that after the meeting. Okay, next item is public questions. We did have one, but I understand it's been withdrawn. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, brilliant. So there are no public questions. Thank you. Okay, next item is the standing update from the scrutiny chairman, and I'll now hand over to councillor Michael Ladd to give an update from scrutiny and, I believe, audit. Thank you.
Oh, there we are. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm reporting on two meetings, the scrutiny committee meeting on the 9th of July and the audit committee on the 16th of July. So the scrutiny meeting on the 9th of July considers the support the council provides for young people with very complex needs, their families and carers, before and during and after transition from children services into the services that they are eligible for under the CARE Act. This is quite a complex topic because it covered both scrutiny committees, the children and the young people's services, and also the main scrutiny committee. The committee recognised that all children are individuals and that their needs in transition would be different. Members acknowledged that the number of children and young people transitioning into adult services was increasing, and agreed that there was a need for services to evolve quite rapidly. We've gone to the transitions team. The committee recommended to the Cabinet member for adult social care, the Cabinet member for children and young people services, and the Cabinet member for education and SEND, they should ensure that adult social care representatives and other key stakeholders are present when key decisions are made as a child approaches adulthood. The other recommendation is to consider physical co-location of transitions team staff within office space to promote closer working. There are other recommendations there as well, as you'll see from the paper. The committee also recommended to the Cabinet member for adult social care, the Cabinet member for children and young people services, and the Cabinet member for education, SEND, that they should, and there's H, I, J and K, the one I'll pick out is to continue to work with young people and partner organisations to develop effective and accessible social prescribing models. The committee then decided to review its recommendations in the summer of 2026, if we're still here. On the 25th of September, the committee will be considering His Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary and Fire Rescue Services Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service Inspection Report 2024 and Action Plan. At this meeting, members will also receive the final report of the task and finish group into traffic regulation orders. The audit committee met on the 16th of July, and the chairman, councillor Spicer, is behind me if there's any questions. At this meeting, the audit committee reviewed Suffolk County Council's arrangements for countering fraud and corruption, endorsed the updated counter fraud and corruption strategy for 2527, a new annual work plan for 2526, and discussed key issues including oversight of fraud risks in council-linked companies, the implications of new legislation, and blue badge enforcement. The audit committee also reviewed the council's information governance arrangements and endorsed the annual report for 2425, noting strong performance in responding to freedom of information and subject access requests. In line with its governance oversight role, the committee evaluated the effectiveness of current arrangements, discussed the use of impact of tools like Safe Drop, and emphasised the need for evidence-based assurance. The committee also considered the council's approach to AI, welcomed improvements to SAR handling, and highlighted the importance of council scrutiny of key performance indicators. Their next meeting is on the 26th of September. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks very much. Happy to open up to Cabinet colleagues who wish to come in. Councillor Hostelberg, you were first.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Ladd and your committee for bringing the important subject of transitions to the scrutiny committee. I'm sure I speak for councillor Bennet that it was a really useful exercise for us because it is an area, we know that there's a lot of work that we are doing regards to transitions, and I can assure the team that we have taken on board all the recommendations. And in fact, we're already working very closely with our CYP colleagues with regards to joint teams in that area to ensure there's a joined-up approach with regards to that important transition from CYP to ASC. So thank you very much, and we're pleased to keep you updated with the progress going forward.
Councillor Reed, do you want to come in?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'm speaking in my capacity as the Cabinet member for education and SEND, and really considering the welcome recommendation from the committee about how well the council is engaging with young people and their families to ensure that they are knowledgeable about the young person's expected transitional pathway into adulthood. So since the adult social care scrutiny meeting, the CYP service, and I speak for my colleague councillor Bennett as well here, has continued to focus on working to improve its preparation for adulthood in terms of its offer to ensure that young people are best placed to transition. This begins with the introduction of a key post to lead this work, and interviews are taking place for a PFA lead officer this week, and I'm pleased to say that the candidate field is strong. A key focus for the lead officer will be the engagement with young people to understand their experiences and ensure that this informs how we support SEND learners, and what information and advice and guidance that they need when to support their transition to adulthood, starting at year nine as a minimum. And furthermore, the director for education and SEND and inclusion has held a council-wide session to understand our relative strengths and areas of development for our post-16 pathways, and with the director of children's services has started discussions with local colleges around the need to work together to improve transition arrangements and the range of courses available to young people. In short, our PFA sufficiency work. The local offer has been reviewed and will be refreshed again later this year, once the engagement work has completed. Finally, across the partnership, we are refreshing our preparation for adult programme of work with an absolute focus on addressing sufficiency for further education places, ensuring an improvement in our transitions processes through focused post-16 team within the SEND statutory service. These changes will result in improved pathways, working collaboratively and cohesively with adult social care services. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to come in on the scrutiny or audit papers? Anything else? No? Okay. Councillor Fairclough-Martin, do you want to come in?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, there is reference to the blue badge service across Suffolk as well. The points are taken on board, but I'm pleased to say that the blue badge turnaround time continues to be one of the best in the country for rural authorities, and it is currently sitting at five weeks, which is seven weeks shy of the statutory target of 12 weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So thank you to the two committees, and thank you for the reports, and obviously you've heard the feedback from that, and we'll pick those up. Okay, the next item is Agenda Item Six, which is Suffolk's Local Nature Recovery Strategy, and I'll hand over to councillor Fairclough-Martin to take us through that item.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It is a great honour to present the final draft of the Local Nature Recovery Strategy for Suffolk. Its intention is simple: to end the decline in nature across our great county. Suffolk County Council is one of 48 authorities in England, appointed by the Secretary of State for Environment, Food and Rural Affairs, to lead on preparing its local strategy. Together, these 48 strategy areas cover the whole of England with no gaps or overlaps. Make no mistake that nature needs to be given the best possible chance to thrive again. It has a direct impact on all of us. We often take it for granted, but it supports our health and our wellbeing, and provides us with clean air and water and our food supply. It also has a direct impact on local businesses and industries—food and drink, farming, forestry, tourism and leisure. 2023 State of Nature Report highlighted that one in six species is now at risk of being lost in Great Britain. Wildlife studies have on average declined by 19%. This is because habitats that plants and animals depend upon have become increasingly fragmented and isolated. These are worrying trends, but this strategy can help. It agrees priorities for nature recovery in Suffolk and proposes the actions to reverse this decline. This will be no mean feat, and will need a huge collaborative effort, which is targeted and coordinated. But this is where the positive news begins. Work began on this strategy in 2022, and it is the result of what a truly collaborative and detailed effort can achieve. We have seen over 50,000 Suffolk engagements recorded at over 250 events, and this culminated in a public consultation in spring this year with over 500 responses. We have considered each and every one of these interactions to help improve and refine the strategy before you today, as detailed in the report. Throughout this strategy, there have been many conversations with many partners and individuals, but none more so than our colleagues at Norfolk County Council, with whom we have worked jointly throughout, establishing the Norfolk and Suffolk Nature Recovery Partnership in 2020. Of course, nature doesn't abide by county boundaries, so the partnership enables us to support nature recovery across Norfolk and Suffolk, identifying common themes and opportunities. The partnership has grown and diversified through the Local Nature Recovery Strategy process, in giving an essential platform for delivery going forward. What this process has shown us is that natural environment truly means a great deal for the people of Suffolk. From the most recent public consultation, 86% of people said that they were concerned about the current state of nature in our county. Even more were concerned about its future. People have told us about biodiversity and wildlife being important to them, and the respite, relaxation and the boost to their physical and mental wellbeing that the healthy natural environment offers. Other elements of our health could suffer without a flourishing natural environment, placing clean water and food production in jeopardy. I would like to acknowledge the key role played by farmers in delivering on the ambition of this strategy. In November last year, I met with Samuel Morgan of Stowe Valley Farm on the Suffolk Essex border, very close to my division, after initially meeting at our county's first food summit, also held in 2024. On meeting Samuel, a tenant farmer, I saw at first sight how nature and farming can coexist and to the betterment of the local economy and the environment. It is possible. Despite the serious situation that our country's natural environment finds itself in, I would like to take this opportunity to shine a light on some of the projects that this council has delivered upon to support Suffolk's natural environment. Our hugely successful partnership on the Brex has led to many exciting developments, such as the Turflock Fish Pass near Mildenhall, which has improved the flow for the migration of fish on the River Lark, one of only 200 remaining short streams in the world. And also on successful community engagement, in my local division in Great Waldingfield on the county wildlife site, a section of the county farm estate, which was not productive to agriculture, has become an oasis to rare species, including pyramidal orchids, the Essex skipper, yellowhammer birds, and the planting of the rare black poplar tree. This is a site I know well and is illustrative of how community engagement can lead to tangible projects that this strategy has set out to achieve. We also have two stunning nationally designated landscapes: the Suffolk and Essex and Heath landscape in the east, and the Dedden National Vale landscape in the south. We have also planted over a quarter of a million trees in recent years, and we're increasing biodiversity on at least 30% of our own county farm estates by 2030. So what happens next? Subject to approval by Cabinet here today, the strategy will then be shared with districts and borough councils and the Broad's authority for final consultation before publication at the end of October. I would like to thank our officers and our natural environment team, and in particular to Tim de Kaiser and Jen Burlingham and the Strategies Project Management Team, and finally to our respected colleagues at Norfolk County Council for being part of a collaborative and productive partnership, and of course, members of the public and landowners who have helped tremendously in shaping this document you see here today. Mr Chairman, I recommend the final draft of the Suffolk Local Nature Recovery Strategy to Cabinet, and welcome any forthcoming questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just clarify? So on the recommendation on page 17 going into page 18, there's two boxes. Do I take it we just take out the box on page 18? That's a... that shouldn't be part of the recommendation?
Yeah, so the recommendations will be those found on page 17, 2A, B and C. The point on page 18, just for clarity, was a reference point that was made when the papers were published, which was prior to today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Fairclough-Martin for bringing this paper this afternoon. And I welcome this Local Nature Recovery Strategy, not least because of my work in the Suffolk and Essex coast and heath national landscape, which is so vital for our county, as well as the Dedden Vale national landscape. But can you tell me a little bit more about how the County Council is already showing a tangible commitment in East Suffolk? And I could refer to Benwick as being a particular example, which sits in the coastal and eastern national landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Yes, indeed. So in this same room, in February, we actually committed £2.7 million towards the joint project with Sizewell to ensure the construction of new salt marshes across that pass around Benwick. Salt marshes are incredibly important. Planting new trees on our land is one thing to support carbon capture. Salt marshes are even more effective at capturing carbon going forwards. And being a maritime county that we are, councillor Reed, you're quite right, in the east of Suffolk, this council has indeed provided its fair share of funding in a creative and meaningful way. Not only does it protect nature, but it will also protect vital infrastructure for the county as well, particularly the A12, in reducing flooding threats in the east of Suffolk. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Happy to open it up to others. Anyone else wish to come in and comment? Ah, sorry, councillor West, missed you. Then I'll go to councillor Nickle next.
Yeah, I'm told I'm sitting at the wrong seat, so. It's my fault for not taking note of this. But just to remind everybody, the County Council earlier in the year, in February, contributed over £2 million to the Benwick flood management project, and part of that is creating 82 hectares of salt marsh and mudflats, which obviously is a positive for biodiversity for things like waterfowl and waders. So we've already done something. So pleased to see that we're, through councillor Fairclough's modern report, proposing to support even more.
Thank you very much. Councillor Nickle?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to welcome this report, and it was sort of in my mind because last Saturday I attended a day-long seminar hosted by the Suffolk Wildlife Trust in Woodbridge, and about 100 odd people of all shapes and sizes turned up. And it was chaired by William Kendall, and they had senior people from the Wildlife Trust and others talking about a lot of the issues that they are dealing with, the partnerships that they are making. The Suffolk County Council was name-checked in that. It was interesting that, particularly with some perhaps some national legislation, which is also threatening our ability to be good stewards of the landscape. William Kendall said we needed to perhaps become a little bit more campaigning. That was the Suffolk Wildlife Trust, not necessarily anyone else. And I sort of suddenly felt conscious that I was the only councillor, albeit a modest county councillor, only politician in the room. And therefore, while I welcome this report, I just think that one of the ways in which these partnerships can be made more fundamental beyond the partnership created in this report is if we all iterate a bit more closely meantime with each other. And I went up and spoke to various people, and I advertised myself as a county councillor and proud of it. But it was a bit disappointing, perhaps, that this section of Suffolk society, regardless of party, was so underrepresented in something which is clearly of great importance to us all. But I do think this is a very, very good report, and I wish it well.
Thank you very much, councillor Nickle. You are quite right that interactivity with all of our stakeholders, whether they are named in the report or not named in the report, is vital to us. And I was very grateful of the tour around the Suffolk Wildlife Trust's Mersham site just down the road from your division, again, on hearing how nature and farming can peacefully coexist in the area, but also how it enriches the local economy, particularly for tourism as well, which is an industry which has found it very difficult to recover since the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richards, you are next.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the Suffolk Local Nature Recovery Strategy. An ask, councillor Fairclough-Martin, do you agree that the strategy promotes the networking of wildlife corridors and thereby increasing diversity and the gene pools within species, and thereby improving the health and resilience of wild animals and plants within our area? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Richards. Absolutely, wildlife corridors are essential. A proud achievement of the administration since 2021 has been the Healing Woods Scheme. That is often a stage one for creating a wildlife corridor. As they mature and as they grow, you can actually extend that coverage even further. One example that I mentioned in my speech was actually the county wildlife site in Great Waldingfield. Adjacent to the county wildlife site is a wildlife corridor, which was actually formerly used which was actually a formerly used World War Two American airbase. And that has ensured that rare bird species such as yellowhammers have seen their numbers increase in the area, while nationally, of course, their numbers are falling. So for the gene pool, in particular reference, wildlife corridors are vital. They are recommended within the reports, and it's something that we support. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Stringer.
Thank you. Welcome the report, and I congratulate everyone that's been involved in it. Sometimes I wish I had been a time machine and rewind time and pull a document like this out and start in about eight years ago. And rerun history, it might look a bit different. Although I have a number of qualms with the way various governments have gone on about biodiversity, many of them portraying biodiversity gain or redressing the decline in biodiversity as somehow an impediment to progress. Yet more and more, we find that working with nature is actually often the most sustainable solution. Welcome this document. After speaking with planning colleagues, this is going to be a very pivotal document in the planning process going forward. It's the fulcrum around which much of this discussion will take place. And equally, with the government setting out that it wishes developers to encourage development to offset biodiversity. I frankly disagree with that, but that's where the government policy is going. Then spaces for nature to be able to thrive and work out what is the best use of that land in biodiversity terms is going to be absolutely more and more vital. So given that this council is a major landowner and other councils are now buying land for biodiversity purposes, probably need to declare an interest. Well, I'm a chairman of a local community woodland, so if there is an offsetting needed, we might possibly be able to help you. Given that the new rules around off-site biodiversity net gaming that councils which own land can benefit from developer funding, how will it be decided which council benefits from local developer funding when you've got different councils owning different parcels of land?
Quick answers have one council. Keep of setting up that question so well. I think we'll add it to the business case quickly.
I was hoping we might start the biodiversity offsetting game before there is one council.
I think one of those questions has been answered, councillor Stringer. But just coming in on your other points, I think the partnership between the county council, the districts, and Ipswich Borough is vital and the successor authorities going forward. And you're right that national governments do come and go in party colour, and biodiversity, environmentalism, protection of the countryside, you know, there are many terms which are used. But the important thing that I feel very reassured by in this strategy is the fact that we're not simply talking about government money. We're talking about the involvement of community groups, businesses, and those on the ground who can actually action effectively change. So rather than government being the solution to the problem that we have with the decline in biodiversity, we're actually empowering local people by saying, these are where the problems are. These are where the sites of concern are. Come forward, and we can work with you with government. The funding element going forward will, of course, shift to the mayor of Norfolk and Suffolk from May two thousand and twenty-six, the funding of which, I understand, will be determined in the coming months. But I very much hope that the holder of that office will continue the good work that Norfolk and Suffolk have put into this strategy. Thank you.
Given that the district councils are now about to agree developer funding arrangements to deliver biodiversity gain, that's why, I mean, the mayor won't raise that money. The money will be raised by whatever councils are left there administering the planning function. But equally, don't forget, landowners are also parish councils as well in this as well, which won't be absorbed into one council of whatever size or complexion.
Thank you. Separate from the planning side, environmental strategy will become a new power of the elected mayor of Norfolk and Suffolk going forwards. The funding that the mayor will be given, of course, will be determined on what they allocate for environmental strategy going forward in a non-planning sense. You are quite right, on the district front, there are those individual planning concerns. But with the mayoral funding side, that is yet to be determined. Thank you.
councillor Lockington.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned that there were going to be consultation or the proposal publication was going to the districts and boroughs. How much involvement did they have before? Because there was a consultation that led to this. I take it they were fully involved with that? The other question for me is, how much do you work together with Network Rail? Because, for example, in Ips... with Network Rail. Because, for example, in Ipswich, the rail corridors have always been known as our green corridors and our greenways. And then suddenly we found in the north of Ipswich that suddenly Network Rail has devastated a whole lot of the railway, you know, with cutting down trees and clearing things out. And if things are dedicated as a green corridor, there ought to be some work with Network Rail so that they don't just take down every tree in the area. They have their own reasons, I'm sure, for doing that. But if they are important corridors, we need to be sure that Network Rail is aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Lockington. I'll take your three points in turn, if I may. So the final stage of the public consultation is about to begin, and that will continue until the end of October. So there will be a further opportunity for the public to see our revised draft, which was consulted upon earlier in the year, and we had our five hundred responses. Regarding the district and borough councils, you're quite right, they are important partners in this process. They were involved in the drafting of the document, and that has happened all over the country. So it's definitely happened in Norfolk, who we are partnering with, not just our partners here in Suffolk. Regarding Network Rail, that's something that I'm not familiar with at the moment. So I will hand over to my officer team. But certainly, we would welcome as many responses to the upcoming consultation, and perhaps Network Rail could be one of them. But I will hand over to the officer team to see if there's been any input in the interim. Thank you.
Thanks. Just to clarify on the supporting authority point, the consultation where we will start, if Cabinet approves this report, is only consultation with the supporting authorities, who are the districts, the borough, and the Broad's Authority. It will obviously be in the public domain, because they will publish this report, as we have done, as part of their own governance. But it won't actually be an opportunity for further public comment on the strategy. That's now finished. And obviously, we provided a full report of that consultation. We have engaged supporting authorities all the way through this process, and it's been very constructive engagement from all of them in the process. So I can assure you of that. I'll pass over to Jen to talk about the Network Rail engagement. Thanks.
Thank you. So throughout our consultation process and through the development of the document, we have spoken to Network Rail. We've had meetings with their individual ecologists. They are currently developing their own biodiversity plans as well. And we were led to believe that they would be developed throughout this year. We haven't had anything new or any updates from them, but we will continue to engage with them. They have received the communications from us, because they're part of the partnership. So they've had all of our documentation and have had that available to them. But I will definitely ensure that we have another checkpoint with them as well as we go forward. Within the document, we do have reference to those green infrastructure corridors, to railway areas as well, and maximising connectivity. So we hope that we have included that throughout the process. Thank you.
Thanks so much. councillor Fleming.
Thank you, very much. And like most people, I welcome this report and the enormous amount of work that's gone into it. I just wanted to... I do have some concerns about its capacity to address the proposed land use changes that we may see coming our way, given the pressures to develop and the pressures to develop solar farms and various types of renewable energy on land, as well as their associated infrastructure, which I gather will be strategically the responsibility of the mayor's office to try to exert some control on. And I'm just wondering if a joint nature strategy, prepared and supported by the two councils, will have any teeth in trying to protect areas that need protection in the face of what we might unfortunately expect as quite an onslaught on land use in the future?
Thank you councillor Fleming. And may I commend your own work in promoting the natural environment and biodiversity in your own division, and particularly its interaction with farming, which, of course, is a cause that you have in your year as chairman. The focus on national energy and infrastructure projects, of course, on the funding element, I can actually pay testament to the Sizewell Sea Fund. A community fund has been set up purely for environmental purposes. They are local community purposes. Tim De Kaiser and from the officer team and I attended the initial board meeting of that in setting it up. And that will allow local communities and local stakeholders to actually source funding to carry out some of the work that the strategy before us today hopes to lay out. With regard to your other technical points, I'll hand over to the officer team on those. Thank you.
Just in relation to the role of the Local Nature Recovery Strategy in land use terms. So I think we tried to make it clear in the report that it has no determining role directly. It is identifying where the best opportunities are to support nature recovery spatially. So as part of the strategy, there's a spatial map, which will be available digitally, and people will be able to go down to land parcel level to see that once it's published. But it is a material consideration for planning authorities once it's published. So whenever a planning authority is considering a planning matter, it is required to have regard, or take account even, of the Local Nature Recovery Strategy. But clearly, that's only one thing amongst many that local planning authorities will be considering in their role in shaping land use and making decisions on that locally. So hopefully, that clarifies the role of the Local Nature Recovery Strategy in that context.
Thank you very much.
councillor Spicer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, coming in at the last minute, and I'm still trying to make this into a question. So I hope councillor Fairclough-Mutton will agree with me. I started to get a bit twitchy then with this talk about the rail, Network Rail and railways. Actually, they're pretty important corridors in their own right. They're corridors from which our population and our economy depend. We have to cut down trees because leaves on lines and falling branches cause trains to be not just cancelled, but worse still, even derailed and have accidents. So we just, councillor Fairclough-Mutton, can we just be sure that we do keep an eye on some sort of general safety and commercial things? I mean, the other thing that I have a lot of difficulty with is the fact that we need to actually cut down hedges on dangerous corners so that people can see where verges do reluctantly have to be cut, even at the wrong time of year. So I'm asking for your assurance that we will just not get a bit overcarried away with Network Rail. I want to think that those railway lines are safe corridors for movement of trains, as well as a priority rather than diversity.
Thank you very much councillor Spicer. Absolutely, I can confirm that all aspects of this strategy, as with all other cabinet papers, are within the realm of the land and will respect public safety. Thank you.
I'm going to have the hands up, so can you remind Cabinet what we're being asked to decide today, please?
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Cabinet are being asked today to approve the recommendations listed on page seventeen, namely two A, two B, and two C, and authorize the deputy chief executive and the economic... Sorry, the executive director for Growth Highways and Infrastructure to approve the Local Nature Recovery Strategy for publication as of today. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Cabinet, are we in favour of that recommendation? Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so we'll now move on to agenda item seven, which is the twenty-five-twenty-six Revenue Budget and twenty-five-twenty-nine Capital Programme, quarter one, forecast outturn. And I'll hand over to councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Colleagues, I never quite understand why this item's always the last one on the agenda, but it always is. And I have tried to have it moved, but with no success. But here we are, considering the outturn at quarter one, the first quarter of the financial year, which ended on the thirtieth of June. Here we are on the ninth of September, and there is a little gap between those two dates, simply because of the quirk of the calendar and August happening, when we don't have any cabinet meetings. So we are a little late in looking at quarter one, as we traditionally are. We catch up a bit, and the quarter two report will be in November. We have the usual, very detailed paper in front of us, fifty-two pages in all, packed with all kinds of facts and figures, in the spirit of openness. Now, the twenty-five-twenty-six financial year, it's evident from reading this paper that we are facing a different scale than perhaps we anticipated of problems and challenges. And let me start with the good news. There remains a high level of budgetary discipline throughout the county council. And here I particularly want to praise adult social care, which has performed well in the first quarter and is giving us an estimate of its outturn at the end of the year, which will be on budget. And GHI is also managing well despite the many stresses and strains that it has to deal with throughout the year. But it's also evident that the Children and Young People Directorate again faces major challenges. These challenges are in large part due to the continuous increases in demand for their services. Now, I'm very pleased to know, indeed in some detail, that the CYP Directorate is undergoing a very considerable transformation at this moment. Indeed, that transformation is coming towards an end. It's being monitored in part by the Transformation Board, which I chair, and which councillor Chensey joins me, where we extensively challenge what transformation work is going on throughout this organisation. Now, there are many carefully thought-through and targeted changes which are being completed and will be complete by the end of this calendar year. And they'll have a noticeable and positive effect, notably on targets relating to EHCP delivery, Education Health and Care Plans, where we must continue to improve our performance. And this and so many other stresses within that Directorate have led to many strains. But I do want to pay tribute here, not just to my two fellow cabinet members, councillors Bennett and Reed, for supervising all that goes on, but to the director, Sarah Jane Smedmore, because I think she is setting an exemplary example. And I am confident that we will see the results of these transformation changes as the year progresses. And having said that, I'm afraid I don't expect to see the overspend totally expunged. As I've said before, demand continues to rise, and we do our best to cope with it. We need to be better at responding to what young people and their parents expect of us, and we are getting better. We will, by the end of this year, have achieved some internal targets, which we've been trying to achieve for the last two... to achieve for the last two or three years, and I'm being given absolute assurance that we will get there. Vulnerable young people are one of our biggest priorities at the moment. Now, we don't know when their degree of vulnerability will become known to us or presented to us for action, so it's almost impossible to accurately predict in advance where likely budget pressures will occur. And this is of course is true for ASC as it is with CYP. But I do believe that the work going on will provide us with better systems and, much more importantly, a better and more responsive way of coping with inquiries from members of the public. So the deficit will not be expunged by the end of the year. I hope to some extent it may be mitigated, but this is a budgetary pressure which we will have to live with. Elsewhere in the budget, we have an overspend by the fire and rescue service, and again we'll hear more about that from my colleague councillor Wiles. But I do have hopes that the overspend here can be corrected within the remainder of the financial year. We also have pressure on the central costs budget, and issues here have arisen against two main areas. First, the work that we had done before local government reform was on the agenda, which we entitled Fit for the Future, which means we looked at everything that we do in this council and came up with ways of doing things differently, yet again, may I say, because we've been looking at this so many times since 2010. But it was a very thorough piece of work, and we put in savings of £5 million in this year's budget. Because of the complications of local government reform, we don't feel that we can carry out all of the changes that we originally thought would be incorporated within the Fit for the Future scheme. One example of that is that we have two different call centres in Suffolk County Council, and we were examining whether they could be combined. Now, we're putting that on hold because we think that's the wisest thing to do with local government change on the way. We don't know what that change will result in, but if we closed one and amalgamated it with another, we may well be doing the wrong thing, and therefore we're going to pause on that. And there are other examples allied to that, which means that the £5 million saving this year is likely to be perhaps two and a half million. As to next year, when I'd hope we will be able to put another substantial slug of savings into the budget under the heading Fit for the Future, that is all being debated at the moment. And I want to ask colleagues indulgence, because I would like to talk more about Fit for the Future when we come to the quarter two budget report, because I am having discussions, not least with the chief executive who is overseeing all of this, and I will be in a better position to comment in detail at that time. Now, the other area that we are concerned about is the dividend that we receive from our wholly owned company, Vertas. That has been lower this year and is likely to be lower than we expected next year. I have some sympathy because the business environment out there in the wide world is tough. They deal to quite a considerable extent with us and other local authorities, and we're all telling them the same thing, that we're cash strapped and we can't put forward as many projects as we perhaps had planned to do. So they are being affected by that and the general economic problems as well. And we've countered this by commissioning an external report, different independent eyes looking at this, and it will report to me by the end of this month. Once I've had it, I will talk to my cabinet colleagues and to councillors in all political groups. I give an undertaking there. But once again, I'm going to be in a better position to talk about this in detail when we debate the quarter two report. So again, with your indulgence, I would like to hold over the detail there for a couple more months. So I haven't got much to say on the capital budget, or I haven't got much to say which is new on the capital budget, because the pressure on that budget is intense with the growing, ever daily growing DSG overdraft. We will, in time, run out of headroom to actually borrow money for the capital budget, in which case we will have to go to government and seek specific exception for them to allow us to borrow more. This will not just apply to Suffolk County Council, this will apply to many county councils who are having similar problems to us. So overall, I want to report to you, before we hear in detail from each of my colleagues, that the quarter one figures are rather like the proverbial curate's egg. And for those of you I'm sure will remember, there was, I think, a cartoon in Punch whereby a very humble curate was sitting at a breakfast table with his diocesan bishop. And the bishop, enjoying a very splendid, ample breakfast, asked his curate how his boiled egg was. And the curate, not wishing to offend anybody, especially the bishop, said, "Good in part, my lord." And I think that's how we are with quarter one now. It's good in part, but we have nine more months to get back to being as close to budget as we can, and I am confident with the help of my team, to my left here, our team, that we will do that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, happy to open up to cabinet colleagues. Your work online, Cabinet Hostberger, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Smith for your words with regards to ASC. And I would like to pass my thanks on to the team, who I think worked extremely hard under the circumstances to get to where we are today. Adult social care is forecast to under spend by 1.1 million against its budget of £371.8 million, equating to a variance of just 0.03%. This is good news and builds on the near balanced position reported at last year's outturn, but it is still early in the financial year, and like other councils, Suffolk is experiencing high levels of demand, which in turn can turn into spending commitments when we have a statutory duty to provide care where it is assessed to be needed. So I think we still face a difficult year despite the overall current positive position. However, as a directorate, we have a mature transformation programmes and budgetary processes in place in which we strive to manage the increase in demand whilst producing savings and improved outcomes for our residents. Care purchasing continues to be the main area of overspend, which is currently forecast to be 0.7 million. Within this, main pressure is from mental health services as a whole health and social care system deals with substantial demand increases. In ASC, there has been a 4.9% rise in mental health customers in this year to date and 18% since April 2024. We have put significant extra funding into this service, indeed a 43% increase in funding, but so far, demand increases mean that spending continues to surpass the funding. We will take this into, sorry, take this into consideration when we are planning for next year's budget setting, but in the meantime, we will do all we can through the transformation programmes to mitigate as much demand as possible. But there is a limit to what we can do on our own, and it requires a system-wide approach, and we will continue to work with our system partners in this area. There is better news in the other customer groups, with the forecast being within the budget for localities, which primarily older people services and for services for people with learning disabilities and autism. This, to a large extent, is due to another year of ASC being on track to meet its savings in full, including the £15 million from the transformation programmes. Nevertheless, the underlying demand is still present, and the position can quickly change. Outside of care purchasing, there is a generally positive news. All but two areas are forecast to be within budget, and these more than offset the couple of areas of overspend. This includes an underspend in housing related support following implementation of new contracts, meaning that the savings targets of £2 million set for this year has been exceeded. Most of the other underspends are pay budget related as a result of vacancies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks very much. Next, I was councillor Bennett.
Thank you very much. So councillor Smith has very clearly laid out the financial position for children and young people services. The latest figures show a significant overspend forecasted at 8.2 million at the first quarter. And whilst this number is stark, it's important we understand the context behind it. Children's services by its very nature is a demand-led service. We can plan, forecast and budget, but we can't predict with absolute certainty when a child will need our care. And the number of children coming into our care has ridden steadily over the past year, and many of these children have complex needs. This is a trend consistent with what our regional and statistical neighbours are experiencing, and it's a very difficult reality that we all face. The cost of external residential placements for these highly complex cases is a major factor. In some extreme cases, one external placement can cost as much as five new foster care placements. Acknowledging this reality doesn't mean we accept it, it means we must be smarter, more efficient and more effective in how we deliver our services. And as councillor Smith has explained, we are partway into a root and branch transformation of children's services. It's not about making cuts, it's about fundamentally rethinking and improving every single part of our work. It's a significant undertaking, but the goal is clear, to build a system that is not only more financially sustainable, but also make sure that our children, young people and their families get the support they need. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Councillor Reid.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Bennett for mentioning that, particularly about the demand aspects of the overall service. My areas of responsibility within children and young people's directorate cover education and learning, inclusion, send, school travel and schools. The key headlines for quarter one within my directorate include the core budget overspend against these service areas, which is forecast to be 0.6 million, plus an overspend against the dedicated, net dedicated schools grant of budget of £63.5 million at present. First, with the service areas, there is currently an underspend of £1.3 million being forecast against mainstream home-to-school travel. This is being forecast due to the significant savings achieved through retended contracts in the last financial year. The team is currently reviewing the impact of new routes that are needed for this new academic term, and this underspend is being used to offset overspends elsewhere within the service. There are a range of variables which cannot be controlled by the service, including when academy chains set opening and closing times, reducing the potential for using vehicles for dual routes, and school closures, which necessitate additional routes or vehicles at an increased cost to the budget. Consequently, at this point in the financial year, it is prudent to hold this underspend against the risk of increasing spend over the rest of the academic year. Home-to-school transport for young people with send is also forecast to be underspent by 0.3 million. However, recent recovery work to reduce the backlog of education care, healthcare and needs assessments meant that it is likely that a number of routes will need to increase over the demand forecasted when the budget was set. This budget forecast assumes that savings agreed of £1 million will be achieved this year, and that costs of retendering routes, including inflationary increases, will not exceed the additional money allocated to this budget. The impact of new placements and travel arrangements made for the new academic year over and above these assumptions should be visible in any changes in the next quarterly report. The underspends against a home-to-school travel budget are offsetting the overspend of £2.5 million currently forecast against the core budget within inclusion. Of this overspend of £2.5 million, £1.2 million is on additional costs for the educational psychology service to manage the backlog and meet new demand for education, health and care needs assessments. This work is likely to be ongoing, and the service will need to ensure that demand can be managed in future years. A further £1 million is being spent on additional staff within send statutory services, which will not be required in future years, as the intention is that the backlog of cases will disappear. The remaining core overspend is against activities unlimited, where a full review needs to be undertaken in order to scrutinise that spend. Now, I move on to the challenging situation of the dedicated schools grant referred to earlier by councillor Smith. This forecast to overspend in total is by 63.5 million. It has been widely covered, both nationally and locally, that the increase in the high needs block element of this grant does not keep pace with the growth in demand for send support and provision for young children and young people in Suffolk. We receive a particularly low level of funding, and I will continue to mention this, compared to both national and statistical neighbour averages for the provision of send services via the high needs block. This is due to an element of the budget being based on historical spending, which is inequitable and clearly doesn't reflect our costs or increasing demand. The increase in spend is a result of three aspects. First, increasing demand for independent and non-maintained specialist placements as demand outstrips supply of local offer places. Second, top-up bandings in all education settings as schools struggle to fund additional costs from within their schools block budgets. And third, bespoke packages of education for children who don't currently have any other provision. It should be noted, the overspend would have been even more significant if we were not for the new specialist placements being delivered by the capital programme. The directorate has a range of measures in place that concentrate on early intervention work with schools to reduce demand for placements outside the mainstream, increasing inclusivity in mainstream schools. As the service addresses the backlog of education healthcare plans, there is a significant risk that the level of operational overspend will increase further in the year. The directorate is refocusing the high needs block work to identify opportunities to improve sufficiency and reduce independent and non-maintained special school placements and alternative placement arrangements while preparing for the government send reforms, as this needs to be addressed on a national scale. Finally, it is a complex picture within this area of children and young people's directorate, but one which we continue to face head-on. We know our financial risks and challenges and remain prudent and measured in our approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor West, do you want to go next?
I do, thank you very much. So operational highways is projected at the moment to be just under 200,000. Over budget essentially made up of three parts. First, there's a pressure in terms of staffing, £400,000 in relation to the new highway services contracts, but also the Gullwing Bridge. Second, there's a £200,000 cost pressure because district councils have reined back on the additional cuts they used to do for verges, which we're obviously now turning to and looking at. And then third, the situation has been mitigated by about half a million pounds less spent in reactive repairs than we would have otherwise expected. in reactive repairs than we would have otherwise expected to, largely in the first quarter due to the better weather than average. So that's it. That's a good thing. So that brings us to just under £200,000 over. It's all in the report, starting at paragraph 66.
Thanks so much. Councillor Faircote-Martin.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Smith mentioned eggs on the breakfast front. Well, I'm pleased that I can give you a triple yoga on my side with three directorates that come under my side. So no scramble. On growth, highways and infrastructure, this has been the second quarter in which the archive service was centralised at the Holes, and that is on budget. Within corporate services also, all of the elements under my brief are in budget, particularly customer experience and digital improvement as well. There's been a £279,000 underspend, and that comes as a result of the fusion of IT systems and providers, something which will go even further following local government reform, I hope. With public health, and that is also on budget. And just to provide an update with regard to the libraries' transition fund, which the cabinet agreed to put forward, £1.8 million forward for this purpose. £200,000 of that has been allocated for this cause. But I'm pleased to report everything in budget or indeed under budget. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Councillor Wallace.
Thank you, Chair. And beginning with fire and public safety. And as mentioned by councillor Smith at quarter one, the fire and public safety directorate are forecasting an overspend of £0.6 million. This is primarily due to Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service, and is the result of several factors. Specifically, we are seeing forecasted overspend on premises, utilities, fleet maintenance and staffing. These overspends are largely attributable to rising energy, vehicle maintenance costs and an increase in call-outs incidents, which have driven up staffing costs for our on-call firefighters. Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service continues to monitor costs, taking every available opportunity to mitigate overspend and improve its financial position. The service remains ever vigilant and mindful of potential additional in-year financial pressures that may arise from spate conditions or adverse seasonal weather events. Trading Standards is forecasting a small underspend, and the Joint Emergency Planning Unit is expected to come in on budget. The directorate is working diligently to reduce pressures and the goal of coming in on budget as we did successfully last year. In terms of capital expenditure, fire and public safety is forecasting a £6 million spend in line with current directorate capital plan. Moving on to public health. And the encouraging news is that our public health grant allocation for '25-'26 has increased to £35.1 million, up from the original budgeted £33.7 million. We're currently forecasting spend of £36.7 million, which is £1.6 million above the allocation. This difference will be met from the public health grant reserve with £1.3 million supporting the zero-to-19 service, particularly health visiting, school nursing, and £0.13 million supporting wider public health and communities. This results in no net budgetary impact for the council this year. The public health grant continues to fund services that improve and protect health across Suffolk, including communities, placemaking and inclusion, support for children and families, services for working age and older people, sexual and reproductive health and our wider enabling functions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Chambers.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I haven't actually got a great deal to report other than most of... Actually, all of my portfolio is currently reporting on budget. What I would say is the waste team are reporting a balanced budget, mainly due to the £1.3 million that we set aside in the last financial year. We're drawing down on that. That was due to cost pressures we foresaw happening this year around insurances, an increase in tonnage in our household waste recycling centres. The tonnage increase has continued this financial year, and we will keep a watchful eye on that in terms of how that may affect the budget next year. But currently reporting all on budget. In terms of capital, again, all on budget. What I would say, there is a slight risk there around the A12 MRN. We've got £11 million set aside in the capital budget. The longer that delay goes on... Currently, we've not received any form of confirmation from government that they are going ahead with that, although they have sort of supported the scheme, words, but not money. So we will wait and see what happens on that. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And councillor Robb.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Are we very, very brief? Despite having announced a business plan with savings of £39.4 million for the Suffolk system after the first five years earlier this week, I have very little to say on this report other than if you look on page 102 over to 103, you will see a reference to the net transfer of £1.2 million into the corporate priorities reserve to support the devolution priority programme. Of course, today we're talking about the quarter one outterm report, which ended before more of our spending commenced on the LGR work. So we are very much focused on that quarter one period today, but happy to take any questions on Q1.
Thanks very much. Councillor Smith, back to you. Anything you wish to add before we open it up to other colleagues? Nope. Okay. Happy to open it up. Yes, councillor Martin.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, a couple of questions for councillor Bennett, please. First of all, on the children in care and the residential, external residential provision, which is clearly one of the major causes of the overspend. It says that not all of the currently expected eight new placements are likely to be available within this financial year. Given that it is taking so long to build these additional placements, are any further placements beyond those eight planned? And I'd like to, although it does say that there's not that much price difference between external placements and in-house placements, the fact is that families are extremely upset and children are extremely disorientated if they are moved out of the county. We've been talking about doing away with out-of-county placements or as much as possible for years and years and years. Why is it taking so long for us to replace provision in order to ensure that we don't have too many out-of-county placements? And what further can be done to make sure that we do reduce out-of-county placements? And then the second question is about the underspend on family hubs. Clearly, you know, one of the main areas in which we can reduce budgetary demand is by actually putting in prevention measures. We're always talking about prevention rather than cure. I would see family hubs as being one of the ways that we can actually deal with problems that families might face before they actually start to face them. I would have thought that was one of the best possible ways of saving on child social care, and I'd like assurance that the £0.4 million underspend on family hubs as a result of vacancies is not going to be used as an excuse for maintaining those vacancies that you are actually going to recruit to make sure that those family hubs are all up and running at their full capacity.
Okay, thank you very much. I hope I've got everything there. So firstly, looking at the children in care and residential. So when those projects started some time ago, there were some initial holdups and complexities with making sure we had the right problems. We're still suffering a bit with lag from that, but we're pushing forward. But it's not just about any property. It's making sure that we've got the right types of property for the needs that the children have. And because of that, we will be continually looking at our sufficiency, continually looking at the needs of those children. So I don't think that work will ever stop. We'll always be looking at our children that we're called for parents to, the places and homes that we have for them, and I can see that carrying on. And that's a big piece of the work that InPower are doing for us at the moment, just having a look at our children in care, making sure that they are in the right place. The point about out-of-county placement, I don't recognise that as a significant issue for Suffolk. Where appropriate, we will always look to keep children in county or as close to their homes as possible. That might mean they're fractionally over the border into Norfolk or Cambridge just because of our geography. Or it might be that where they are out of county, that's because it's the right place for that child. But it's not what I would see as one of the most problematic issues. I'm getting nods from behind, so I've got that right. With regards to family hubs, yeah, absolutely. So you will remember some budgets ago, we talked about looking at our family hubs across Suffolk and seeing if there was any opportunities to rationalise. We're not considering that anymore with the change in government, with the direction that the government's going, with the bills coming through. We recognise that the direction of travel is that that is where much more of the work will need to be done, and it forms a massive part of our Families First programme, using not just our family hubs, but where they're co-located with libraries and all those places where children and young people can come to us, not just for sort of safeguarding help or things like that, but for universal services as well. Okay.
May I just add, if I may, please? We have over the years, the last five years, invested a great deal of money in this area from our capital budget, and some of that work is still continuing and will produce its effects over the next 12 months. And I am assured that we will have in 12 months' time eight more places to put children who need care with complex needs, that they will come online. So we've had the clarification that they're not necessarily out of county, but they may be in unregistered places, which is not what we want. But we will have our capacity increase substantially over the next 12 months.
Councillor Lockington.
Thank you, Chairman. My question was very similar to councillor Martin's question, but I would like to ask the company that are in looking at the way where children are placed, when will you expect that report to be finished? And also, can I ask, how many children do you have in unregistered places? Which was just mentioned here, that there are children placed in homes that are not registered. How many of our children are placed? Do you know that? If you don't have the answer here, then, you know, it can come later, but that would be useful. And then I have another question afterwards to come from Hoffensberger, but that can wait.
Okay, so on the unregistered placements of the 960 children that we have in care, the numbers are small, that I don't want to, you know, even sort of... I can pass to Sarah Jane if that's helpful, but the numbers are so small that it could be identifiable of the numbers of unregulated placements. Remind me of the other half of your question, I'm sorry.
The company does?
The company, it's InPower. InPower, the work is ongoing. I feel that it's approaching the end of the work that they're doing. I'm not sure the timing is of the report, but I'll hand back to Sarah Jane, who might have the detail on that.
Thank you, councillor Bennett, and thank you for your question. So in answer to children who are in unregulated placements, we have all of that detail, we have that detail which we'll be able to share. The numbers are small, so I would be concerned about having that conversation. The majority of those children are in placements which are on the flight path to registration, so it's not that they're children who are waiting in a space that's unregulated. And if it is the case, that's a very short-term position that they're in. So it's something that I look at daily, that we look at alongside councillor Bennett. InPower will finish the second part of their work with us just at the end of September. They're working really hard with us, and staff are really enjoying the work that they're doing just to think differently and think about how we best use our best resource, which of course is our fostering family. And we're going to be talking much more about that at scrutiny on Thursday. But the opportunity for us to think slightly differently about how we make sure we get the right care for our children, and that's already started to see some really good efficiencies, financial but also outcomes for children. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Chenji.
Thank you, Chair. My question is paragraph 97 on page 103. If I did know this, I'm really sorry, I've forgotten. But there's a £7 million held, and it's forecast to be applied in '25-'26. I just wondered what was in there, because it's obviously ring-fenced for certain projects. So, and I'm happy to not have the answer now, but at a later date. They're called short-term revenue grants.
I think we can give you an answer, not because of me, but because of the expertise that lies behind me, which is very considerable. And so may I pass over to Louise Ainsley.
So these are grants that we received in '24-'25 that had conditions attached to them, so revenue grants, across a range of services that hadn't yet been met. So we put them into the reserve to then spend in this year, so we don't lose them. So this is just grant monies that's been spent this year rather than last year.
The question was really, what sort of things must we spend it on? So what areas do they, or can it be?
There's a whole range of grants, so I can give you some detail on those grants that that's specifically called to, yeah.
Councillor Lockington, sorry, you had a second question, I cut you off.
Thank you, Chair. It's in paragraph 30. There's a talk about how much budget you spend on ACS and older people and so on, but there's a sentence which I thought was good to look into. A service for people with learning disability and autism are forecast to underspend by £1.3 million. Now, how much is £1.3 million out of the amount of money you spent on them? Because I was looking through, it actually doesn't tell us how much money is allocated in the first place. And I could imagine the allocate budget is far smaller than the spend on older people in care and so on. So £1.3 million could be quite a lot of money that they underspend on the very vulnerable people, people with disabilities and autism. So I'd love to know, is it a lot of the budget you're underspent with?
I don't know the figures off the top of my head. Do you, Gareth? Yeah, we'll check and get back to you. But I just want to say, underspend doesn't mean that we're not providing the services that we should be for the people who are entitled to our care. It purely means that we are running the service more efficiently. And in fact, we've done a lot of work in the learning and disability and autism area, in particular on getting funding back from health in that area as well, where there's a joint responsibility for some of those people as well. And I mentioned in my introduction to this quarter in that our transformation programmes are very mature, and the learning disability autism transformation programme is a mature programme. And we're starting to see a more efficiently-run services. So an underspend doesn't always equate to the fact that we're not meeting our statutory duties with regards to care packages. It purely means that we've worked hard in that area to ensure there's sufficient running of those services. I will get you the final figure with regards to the percentage of the £1.3 out of the total budget. Oh, 131, I've been told. 131 is the total budget, so it's a small number.
Thank you. Councillor String.
Thank you. I've got three questions, if that's okay, but three different directorates, and I can't probably work out which one. I think the first one will start with councillor Row. The text in the report about the amount so far of the libraries' transition is, and how much budget is allocated to it, is in the text. So it's completely upfront. The only reference we can see to the spend on local government reform and devolution, I think, is in paragraph 95, but it's sort of hidden in plain sight. I'm just wondering, as we get into further quarters, that the forecast spend and the actual spend will be in the text identical to the... actual spend will be in the text, identical to the other transitional programmes that we're going through?
I'm sure as we move forward, we can give more detail and a greater breakdown. I think simply for Quarter One, there wasn't very much at all to break down.
Understood, understood. The next one, I think, is for councillor West, I think. Governments recently announced £29 million of transport funding for Suffolk over the next few years. Given the council is projecting it will only be able to spend half a million pound of the £3.5 million of local transport funding allocated this year, that's you. Yeah, yeah, sorry. What are the plans to ensure that this is enough, we have enough capacity to make the most of this funding?
Good question. I don't know, Andrew, you could help on this?
So happy to do so, and apologies for being in the wrong seat for this question. So it's new news and we are in the process of absorbing exactly how we wish to do so, but we have a number of mechanisms where we have delivered reasonably significant sums of local transport funding to date. So competitions with the communities to develop new passenger transport proposals, the rollout of additional passenger transport facilities, cycling and walking activity, those kind of things. They shouldn't be confused with delivery of core spend on the Highways Budget. So whilst, of course, this is a Quarter One report and they're not included in the numbers, then the team are actively reviewing how we will deliver those and we have mechanisms to do so.
Thank you. And I think the other one is either for councillor Wiles or possibly councillor Smith. Councillor Smith, in your introduction, you mentioned some of the cost pressures on the fire service, but some of them being related to the amount of callouts because of hot and dry weather. I did almost mix my metaphors and think of King Com Nute trying to hold back the tide. You know, will we in future, and you were saying you were confident we'd get the budget back on track, given that the likelihood in terms of weather events are going to be more extreme in the future than less, will we build into future budget settings climate modelling to make sure that we get a really accurate idea of the level of budget that will be required?
Yeah, well, thank you, councillor Stringer. I wish my crystal ball was working, I'd be able to see what the weather will be like in the next three or four months. As we all appreciate, that we've had a really, really dry start to this year, and there's been lots and lots of callouts for farm fires, thatch roofs, and that puts an immense amount of pressure in the short term. We often find that in Q1, there is more pressure, which alleviates as we go through the year. You're right, and as I stated, we will be looking at the weather conditions and what pressure he puts onto the service. And I'm sure that councillor Smith, once he has finished his eggs, will be able to help us in any way that he can. But I'm glad that people are concerned about this. There's been lots of social media activity warning people of the current situation, and it is something that we are very, very mindful of.
Can I, can I come in and give my sixpenny worth for all that it is worth? I'm not a great believer in climate change, but I am a believer that changing, that climate is changing. Because 8,000 years ago, we entered the last ice age, and it is inevitable that in geological time, the climate will change. Now, we have had the industrialisation of the planet over the last 250 years. What am I saying, councillor Martin, that's so wrong?
Can we, councillor Martin, can we just let councillor Smith finish, please?
So I do believe that there are, there are changes which are happening, I don't deny that. How we can actually translate that into budgetary terms, I don't know, but I am happy to undertake to talk about it with my finance officers.
Yeah, I'm slightly underwhelmed by the response, because what I was hoping to get was that the cabinet would be willing to look at forecasts and not just look at, react to what's happening on the ground. Scientists will help you with this. There are climate scientists that have forecast much of this. So I was just, I was just hoping that we were going to forecast what happens if we have 1.5 degrees above pre-industrial average, two degrees above pre-industrial average, so we can then map out what resources we might need to mitigate any of that change.
I think, also, can I just say that there's budget setting and then there's outturn. So when it comes to budget, all directorates have to, in the round, look at demand for that service. That isn't just from climate, that could be from other things. So I think, I think each directorate does look at its own demand and what that demand would be, and this would make up some of that, some of that. I mean, for example, running air conditioning in some of our buildings more, running heating less, you know, it works both ways. So I think, I think as part of the budget setting process, we look at demand, and by that very nature, that we'll be looking at changes to climate. But if anyone else wishes to come in and add to that, I'm happy. Councillor Hossner.
I was going to say exactly the same as you, in that part of the budgetary process is where we see a rise in demand, therefore we are able to flex our services to do that forecast. We have very good people that look at forecasts in demand, and climate events do cause extra demands, as we know, whether it's flooding or whether it's one-off events, but we, and we build that into part of the budgetary process. It's our everyday work, you do.
I think it's factual. Councillor Robb.
Only some very brief additions, but I think if we look at the risk register, that will include a change in climate, and many, many of our policies include adapting to a changing climate, whether that's hotter summers, increased and more extreme flooding events. So I think, I think it is included in many of our documents and considered in our budget setting.
Councillor Bridgeman, you're next.
Talking to me, I'd like to ask about the first paragraph of the conclusion. £13.3 million overspend, Quarter One. I'm not so much interested in that. The £4.7 million relates to savings not delivered. Have you got any examples of the savings and why they weren't delivered? First paragraph, page 112 of the pack.
Page 112, paragraph?
One, yeah, right at the start of the conclusion.
123.
What, paragraph, page 112, paragraph? One, the first one, right at the top.
Paragraph 123.
Oh, right.
We need to know.
Which one? Where's the, oh, right, right through to the end, conclusion. And that's the conclusion, the start. Let's have a look here. Hang on, I could be sending you.
Thank you. To back page 122, paragraph 179.
122 sounds a bit, doesn't it? Yes, yeah, the top paragraph. £4.7 relates to savings not delivered. Just wondered what the savings were, why they weren't delivered.
I think I did say that in my speech, that fit for the future, we put £5 million into the budget, but we're likely to only achieve £2.5 million savings there, so that's some of it. The other is, I think the answer is in Appendix D, the very last page of our papers on page 132, and that gives a detailed breakdown of where we are against where we had hoped to be.
So I can say which?
Appendix D.
Final paragraph, final page.
132, the very final page, yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Chench, you want to come back?
Yeah, just a quick one to follow on from councillor Stringer. I think there is artificial intelligence that can help predict for councils future weather to help them with their budgeting. So perhaps we should look at that. Does that make you happier, councillor Stringer?
Yeah, there's actual intelligence.
Well, that's still AI, yeah, but that has, that uses all that scientific, all the science that you were alluding to, that's what it uses, but it does it very quickly, whereas it would take us months.
Okay, so that is all the questions we have. So councillor Smith, back to you, and can you just remind us what we've been asked to decide?
Yes, well, just before I do that, Chairman, I did talk in my remarks about the curate's egg good in pot. A couple of other councillors have picked up this, we've had the triple yoker, and I thought to myself, well, how can I carry this forward? And I thought about poached eggs, fried eggs, even pickled eggs, but I couldn't quite make it work, so I'm going to abandon that and tell you a true story. And this is a true story, it happened to me on Sunday. For the very first time in my life, I tried to make quince jelly. There was a point to this at the end. I was given by a neighbour some lovely quinces and that they needed to be dealt with, so I looked up on the internet, I can just about get to the internet on a good day, how I should do this. So I did all the stages and the liquid was boiling, but I don't have a jam thermometer because I've never done this before, and the gelling point is really quite important, and I missed that, so my quince jelly is really rather too liquid. And I want to use that as an analogy towards our budget, because our budget now and at the end of the year, outturn, does need to be properly set. And quite like quince jelly, slightly tart, but pleasurable and satisfying. I don't know, I've achieved that personally, but there we are. Anyway, that is leading up to me saying to colleagues here that we are asked to agree to the items listed in paragraph seven on page 82, little a through to little f1 and 2.
Okay, I think we need to stay on the theme of today's meeting for this final bit. Members, are we happy as per the recommendation laid out on page 82, are we in favour? Can we have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, well, thank you everyone, that concludes today's meeting. If I can just ask members, please, to take your belongings and paperwork with you and put the microphone cards in the box on the lower table. Thank you very much.